Oh, it's my favorite. I know, everybody's getting so quiet.
Oh.
Where's my key?
Oh, shoot.
Finally was able to bring it.
Can you pass me a water bottle, Sharon?
Pardon me? Uh, no. No?
Anybody else need a water?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't hear anything.
My un- my un- my un-.
Do you have a mark?
I keep forgetting we have our new clock. Accurate, very accurate, yes.
Say thank you, Doug. Thank you, Doug.
Oh, I thanked Doug last- last time, yeah. Okay, it is about- my phone is faster than this clock.
This clock is correct.
This clock is always correct.
There are no questions.
My point.
Okay, six o'clock, call this meeting to order. Are we could please stand and join us in saying the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then extend tonight's agenda is the approval of this evening's agenda. Commissioners, do we have anything to add or take away from this evening's agenda? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to the city commission interviews. And we will start with Ms. Brown. If you could just come forward, please, up there if you're comfortable. Yeah, perfect.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for being here. So we will just start with asking you a couple of questions. Each one of us will ask a question. And we will just go from there. So thank you for coming and for putting yourself forward and for making it to this, to the city commission interviews tonight. So, thank you for being here. So I'm going to ask the first question, and it's a two-parter. Are you aware that this appointment will end in November of 2023? And that if you choose to continue to serve as commissioner, you will have to run for the seat?
Yes, I am. And I'm told that by April is when I make the submission for the following term.
Yes.
So that will give a, not even a month of time to get my feet wet, which is kind of fair for folks who decide to commit to campaign upfront and then kind of walk into the position somewhat blind. So I only get a month advantage.
Right. Well, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware, aware of how long the appointment lasts. So the next question is, why are you applying to fill this vacancy?
Okay, so as you've seen from my application, I have a passion and an interest in volunteering and being part of a community and putting the work in. The grass is always greener where you water it. And so you can have a well-funded, a organization. But if you don't have folks that are putting in the work, it doesn't happen. So I have that, that history, not in government before. I had kids six years ago, and that was a very trying time. So I've backed away. And then this position came available around the time that my kids started kindergarten. And I have a little bit more flexibility. And it's something I'd really like to try.
Good, thank you. So we'll go down to Commissioner Schwartz.
First of all, good for you for recognizing your free time. I have a two-year-old and a four-month-old. So can you tell us about your experience engaging with the community and how that will benefit your role as a commissioner?
Okay, so engaging with the community. This happened to work out well with having kids my age that the Parks Millage passed. And then there were conceptual drawings of what the playgrounds would look, would look like. And that gave me an opportunity to sit down with my kids and say, what do you think about plans A, B, and C? And I thought I was just walking through the steps just to have a conversation. But they gave really insightful feedback, as, as they would, they're playing on it. So that led to coming in in one of the open sessions, meeting Derek Melville with Parks and Rec and just starting that, that conversation and engagement. And I, I really enjoyed it. And I really enjoyed interacting and working with the folks that are part of the government here.
Thanks.
Thanks. What do you feel is going well in East Grand Rapids and what do you think could be improved upon?
Okay, so what's going well in East Grand Rapids? It appears to be a well-funded and well-run city. There are, I, I've witnessed in my time here, which has been about eight years, I've witnessed the fundraising for the trail to be completed around the lake. That seemed like it went very, very quickly, that funding came available. And as well as the crew house on, on Reed's Lake, that seemed to come very quickly. And so what that tells me about the community is that they care about shared resources and they're willing to contribute. Passing the Parks and Rec Millage is another example where, again, people are willing to share, to have shared resources. So I think that's really, really great.
And the next question would be, what should be, be the city's top priorities?
So I'm going to lean on Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Prior, higher, excuse me. Priorities have a lot to do with what our ba- our needs are as humans. So at that bottom layer of Maslow's hierarchy of needs is, your basic needs are met, you have a house, you have a roof over your head, access to food. Where that would come into play here in EGR is, I would ask the question of, of the employees of our community, so their teachers, our principals, our superintendent, our administrators here in government, is there housing that's attainable for them within our city? If they choose that they would like to live in our city and to, and to keep that in mind. Also, within that lower level or basic level of Maslow's hierarchy of needs is safety. And so ensuring that we have support and engagement for a safe community with our public safety and our first responders.
Thank you.
Can I add just a little bit more? So there are, in a lot of ways, I feel like the city has that pretty well worked out. What's happening right now with the Parks and Rec and, and ideas of changing the way that the, the road flows from Reed's Lake Boulevard over to Lakeside. I live in that neighborhood. And I did listen to, did watch the December 20th meeting. And I heard some of the concerns of the residents. And it sounded similar to when we did the master plan as a city. My, my neighborhood street Greenwood was concerned about how they were categorized in the master plan. And so one of the commissioners at the time sat down in a living room with the neighbors. And we had a discussion. And it started out all over the map, people's fears, people's concerns. And then throughout about an hour to an hour and a half discussion, there was a, an understanding. I think everyone in the room was on the same page. They saw multiple sides of the, of the point of, of what was going on and had a cohesive, cohesive plan, but a cohesive thought. And, and so, again, my neighbors are concerned about routing, routing the street over towards Durant and Lansing. And I would like to invite them into, could we have a discussion as neighbors and talk about what we're most concerned about, what we're most afraid of? So that would be my first thing, if I were to do, if you were to choose me.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mark, you can take number five since Chris is not here.
Okay. We had this one low when we met the first time. But can you give some examples of group decision-making that you were involved in? And perhaps how those experiences would be translatable to working here with this group?
And can you say that once more, group?
Group decision-making.
Group decision-making, collaboration, sure. So in my professional life, I am a systems engineer in a leadership role. What that means is I've come up, and I've been doing that for 20 years now. I've come up through the ranks of learning processes, learning the technology. And now I'm in more of a, a leadership perspective, which means I get the hard questions. And the hardest questions are the ones where the customer set comes in all different types of moods, usually an unhappy, angry mood, that something isn't quite right. And so part of my job as a systems engineer is to take those concerns, pull them into, and understanding that technology, pulling them into, into a meaningful discussion of, if it were to look like this, would that meet your needs? And here's the reason why I think this could. And if you ask somebody what they want exactly, in my, in my, again, my profession, it was like, well, I don't know, I just know I don't like this. And so if you throw out different ideas, they can for sure tell you if they like them or not. But if you ask them for an idea specifically, it's, it's, it's too much. So that's, that's my, that's my bread and butter. That's what I do on a, on a weekday basis.
Let me go six, too?
No, I can do six, I'll wrap it up, I guess. So for the last question, please name three qualities a commission member should have.
Oh, okay. So when I was thinking about applying for the position, I asked two of the commissioners, two different commissioners, if I could sit down and if I could talk with them to get a sense of the day in the life, like a good day, a bad day, those sort of things. I wouldn't, what campaigning is like. And through those discussions, I would say that the top three are, the ability to actively listen, the ability to, I, I touched on this a little bit as well, to take the tidbits of, of a message, despite how it came across tone, but the, the nuggets, the gold nuggets of what they were really trying to get across and give them, giving them the benefit of the doubt that, that where they came from is a place of, they want something for the greater good, even though it may not came, come across that way. So be able to, to distill those information. And then to be able to communicate concisely. So part of what I've seen here in, in the meetings, watching online is, being prepared, being able to ask a very pointed question to keep the, keep the meeting going, keeping it meaningful.
Thank you. Commissioner, pardon me? Do anyone have any more questions for Ms. Brown? Any additional questions?
I know.
No? Okay. Thank you so much for your time and for being here this evening.
Could I say one more thing?
Yeah, of course.
I was thinking, for commissioners, I was thinking of the day-to-day, what you do. In terms of qual- qualities that a commissioner absolutely needs to have is to be truthful, to have, to be able where people can trust them and to have the highest of integrity.
Good ads, yeah, good. Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. Did you have anything else, any other questions?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think so. I put this here so I wouldn't say placed document here in accident.
Well done.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for taking the time tonight. We really appreciate it. And we will, like I mentioned before, we will be deliberating at the next meeting on February 20th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you texting Chris? Are you texting Chris?
He unfortunately had a work issue come up, so I don't think he'll be joining us.
Okay. And do you know where Mr. Berdick is?
Mr. Berdick's right back there.
Oh, Mr. Berdick, I didn't see you back there, I apologize. Come on up. Thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Sure. So I'm not, I don't know if you were sitting in here the entire time. So we're just going to ask you a couple of questions. Each one of us will take a question and go through, through those with you. And then we will be deliberating at the February 20th meeting.
All right.
Okay? So thanks for taking the time again. We really appreciate it. So the first question I have is a two-parter. Are you aware that this appointment will end on November 23rd? And that if you choose to continue to serve as commissioner, you will need to run for your seat?
Yes. And I know that this is going to come off like we're repeating each other between two interviews. But, but yes, absolutely. I'm aware that I've helped on campaigns for other publicly elected officials, as well as commissioners that lived down the street from me. So I kind of have an idea of what's going into it. It'll just be a lot easier to answer the questions when they ask me directly what I think, as opposed to what I think somebody else thinks.
True, very, very true. Okay, thank you. So next, why are you applying to fill the vacancy for city commission?
Well, this came up because I've been on the Parks and Rec Commission for a few years now. And what I found was I really enjoyed working on all these projects in Parks and Rec. But where I found wanting more was when projects would kind of bleed past Parks and Rec. So a lot of times, like when we were looking to pass the millage, I went around and knocked on the doors, a lot of the neighbors in my neighborhood and around that park. And I would get questions about the playgrounds and the parks. But then I'd also get questions regarding the traffic patterns and the public safety and who's going to be watching those later at night and security and issues like that. And I found that a lot of times, a lot of the negatives people had with the new parks wasn't as much about the parks or the facilities. It was how we were going to implement more parking, more traffic, how we were going to handle the pedestrians, how we were going to handle security. And I wasn't able to give them a really good answer on how we were going to follow through with that. So when this came available, it was, it, it seemed like a, a great way that I could not only give them an idea of how it was going to happen, but then kind of fight for that, too.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. What is your experience engaging the community and how would you translate that to this role?
Well, like I said, part of it was, I, I still am a member on the Parks and Rec Committee. So when there are millages or when we're dealing with the wealthy or any of the other school playgrounds, I was part of the planning committees. I was part of going and talking with some of the students. I was part of, of door knocking around the area on getting feedback from our neighbors because there was a lot of feedback to be had. And I think a lot of them are here tonight still. And, and in that respect, too, I'm sticking around after this so that I can kind of hear what they have to say because it's important. And I think a lot of them expect me to be here and listen. And so I can take that back to the Parks and Rec Committee. And we can use all that information to, you know, do something that works for everybody, solve a lot of the problems or a lot of the fears they might have for those sort of situations. So when it comes to the direct actions, I've done door knocking campaigns for state offices. I've done, like I said, the millage campaigns where I would door knock as well. And then I'm just kind of out and about. I walk my dog every morning. I talk to the community when they're there. On the way here, I actually had one of my neighbors call me and ask me about the meeting tonight to see if I was going to be here. So when I walk out of here, I'm going to be getting on the phone with one of our neighbors down the street who just wants to report on what's said in here today. I mean, they can watch it later, but sometimes it helps just to kind of have someone in the room. So I'm kind of that person in the room for a lot of people.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ryan. What do you feel is going well in EGR and what could be improved upon?
There's a lot going well right now in EGR. I think, and this is kind of what I said in our last interview, but this is kind of a transition time where we're all coming out of a lot of COVID lockdowns. So it's really easy to look at things in a very positive light because for a while, we had so little community involvement on just an abundance of caution, which I fully support. But having everyone come out and having the parks full again and having, I mean, sitting at rec basketball with all the parents of my second grader and my fourth grader, where we can sit down and just get to know each other better. I barely know my second graders' like families, like the parents around there because we just missed a couple of years there. And then catching up with all the fourth graders' families, it's just, I, I think it's great. So it's great to see a really busy gaslight. It's great to see a really busy football season. It's great to see the parks working great again and all the sports just being so full. We are having a hard time finding enough people to, and places to put them all. So it's a great part.
Thank you.
What should be the city's top priorities?
Our top priorities in my, so I think we do a really, really good job here. So I'd say the number one priority is to not lose sight of what we're really good at. East Grand Rapids, when we, I moved here five years ago. And when we moved here, East Grand Rapids was an easy choice in the Grand Rapids area, but, but nationally, honestly. And I don't think we want to do too much to distract ourselves from what we're really, really good at. I think we have really good schools. I'd like to keep really good schools. I think we're a really safe community for the most part. I feel like we have a very, a very tight community. It feels like we're a really little town in a really big town, which is really unique. And so that, that's what I think is, is, is our strengths.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mark.
Any, Ryan? Can you give some examples of group decision-making that you've been involved in and how those experiences would translate to this position?
Man, I feel like I'm telling the same story over and over again. But a lot of the group decision-making over the last couple of years, and, and to give you a little more background, I'm a stay-at-home dad. So a lot of my time, my active time is doing things with the community. I, I don't really have a career. And when I did, I was a pilot, which not a ton of group decision-making as a pilot. It's like me and one other dude. But a lot of it lately, I think, has been really productive on, when a group comes together, we come up with really good ideas. Just a different one off the top of my head. When the millage passed, the number one thing everyone kept wanting was a dog park. It was like one of those things where like, man, where are we going to put this thing? And no one had a really good idea where we were going to put a dog park, but everyone wanted it. So we put money in the project. When people would ask about it, we'd be like, it's on there, we've got money for it, but we don't really know where it's going to go. But we put money in there for if we can find a spot. And then as a group, and I think this was mainly Shay. Guys over here. Awesome idea. I mean, what a perfect spot to put it. But again, if you would just ask me to find a dog park spot or if you had just asked any one person to find where you're going to put a park, it might not have happened. But because we had a whole group of people all working together to try to solve a problem that the city, all the residents were like clamoring for, we found a place and like on the way over here, I saw that we had, they were post-hole digging out there today. So not only did people want something, they pat, we, we, we got the money for it. We passed it, we found a spot for it, and we're building it. Like, talk about a good way to have community engagement in local government when people ask for something and then it's done. And it's done pretty quickly in a really, really good solution. So thanks for that one, that was good.
Great. So the last question is, please name three qualities that a commissioner should have.
Okay. I think they need to be persistent. Because like I said, I think you need to be actively involved in the community. And being actively involved in the community is you're going to have to meet a lot of people and not everyone that wants to talk to you at that time. But that doesn't mean that you don't need to make an effort. You don't need to be there, you don't need to be available when they do want to talk or they do have something they want to talk to you about. So you have to be persistent, you have to be there. It's almost, it's on borderline on being stubborn, on always being available for people when they want to, that, that you're there for them when, when they, they need you because it will come up. And they might tell you no 10 times, but they might really need you on that 11th one. So you just got to be there. So I'd say being persistent is definitely one. Being a really good listener, getting beyond the first answer. A lot of times, you have to dig a little deeper to find out and drill down on why exactly someone might feel the way they do. Maybe they don't want the park. Maybe they just say they don't want the new playground up in Manhattan Park. But it might not be that they don't want a new playground. That might not be the real reason they don't want it. Maybe the problem is, is they're always having issues on Saturday mornings with the street being parked on both sides. So maybe it isn't the park. Maybe it's just that they don't feel safe letting their kids go across the road because there's too many people and they're worried about that. So you have to be a listener and then dive a little bit deeper. There's two, listening, being persistent. And then following through. You just need to be someone that does what they say they're going to do. And that's not always easily said or done. And not everybody's going to love the decision you make. But I feel like if you're consistent and you're honest and you tell people the, the real reason why, why some decisions are being made, you can usually bring people around so they can at least see the other side of the point as well. Especially if you've been talking through them through the whole process and it isn't just a surprise on someone.
Thank you. Commissioners, did you have any other additional questions for Mr. Berdick? No? Did you have any questions about this for us?
I don't. Thank you guys for the opportunity, I really appreciate it.
Of course, thank you. Thank you for taking the time. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Just for those in the public, the commission will be deciding at the next meeting on making a selection. So we'll be moving on with the agenda here shortly.
Okay, so next on this evening's agenda is public comment. Is anyone joining us this evening to make public comment to something that is not on this evening's agenda? No? Okay, hearing none, I will close public comment and move on to report of mayor and city commissioners, including committee liaison reports. And I will start here on my right with Commissioner Schultz.
Thank you. Good evening. I have nothing new to report this evening. Just want to say again, thanks to the Department of Public Works for clearing the roads a week ago and keeping us safe and allowing the city to continue to move forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz, do you have anything?
Nothing, Dad, thanks.
Nothing here, thanks.
Nothing for me?
Wow. Okay, I have nothing to add.
Just two quick items. As Commissioner Schultz noted, just thank you, shout out to the EPW staff again, amazing job through, quite a bit of snow thrown at us again. Second is playground bids are, will be open tomorrow at 10, 10 o'clock tomorrow. So we are hoping for better results than last time around. And we'll update the commission once we have numbers and we'll see what happens.
Okay, and how long will those be open? They open tomorrow?
Yeah, well, we, we're taking the bids in tomorrow and we'll open them, so we'll know.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying. Okay, okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, so the next agenda item is to consider approval of revised Fred Bun trail design and authorize staff to release project for bid and apply for necessary permits. This introduction will be given by Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Melville.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Yes, before you, this evening is a request to consider adopting a final trail design for the multi-use trails at Manhattan Park and also to authorize city staff to use the selected design to solicit pricing for the construction of the proposed trail network. So as outlined in my memo a little bit, I will highlight some of the important details here. The renovation of the multi-use trails at Manhattan Park has been in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan since 2012. And then in 2020, when the master plan was revised, And then in 2020, when the master plan was renewed, um, not only did it, um, the renovation of the trails remain, also the idea of expanding the trail network was added on. Um, and so that became a priority project for the Parks and Recreation Department and also for the city as it relates to park improvement projects. Um, so since that time in 2020, um, the city, um, did, um, bring forward a proposal to the City Commission and also to the Parks and Recreation Commission. There was a proposal that was brought forward, um, that outlined a conceptual trail design for the parks with a request to see if the city was interested in participating, um, in funding that project. And so at that time in the spring of 2020, uh, the City Commission, uh, did decide that there was conceptual approval for the project. And then also $75,000 was allocated towards the construction with the understanding that local volunteers would fundraise the, the other $75,000 of the proposed $150,000, uh, project budget. So throughout 2022, uh, the city, we did host a variety of input sessions here in the commission chambers and also, um, at the park and, and elsewhere. Um, some of those input sessions were, uh, general in nature where we, you may recall, we had open house sessions that were, um, designed to solicit feedback on a variety of projects. And the multi-use trails at Manhattan Park was on a number of those agendas sessions. Um, additionally, we, we hosted a dedicated, um, multi-use trail, um, input session at Manhattan Park and on a windy spring day last year. Um, and then most recently in August, we, we hosted another, um, input session, um, specifically related to the multi-use trails. Um, so at those input sessions, the intent was to collect, uh, input from the, the residents. We had conceptual designs, um, that we, um, we had a rendering shown and, and wanted to hear what they liked about the trail design and maybe what they, um, would like to see changed. Um, and we encouraged those residents to think about, uh, the options before them and then to send, um, any feedback that they may have to the, um, the email address that was created, the input@eastgr email address, um, that has been, uh, really helpful for collecting community input. Um, so the things that we heard from those, um, input sessions that of the people that were interested in having the trails there, that they really wanted to see close to 3.0 miles in trails, um, and more if, if possible, but really that was a, a good number that they had liked to see. Um, they wanted to make sure that there was some varying terrain, um, and opportunities to get into the park, um, into the, um, additional areas, um, and then also having additional access points. Following the, um, input sessions in the spring, we did engage the services of Bar Engineering. It's an envi- environmental engineering firm. Um, and we requested that they perform an ecological assessment of the site. Um, they took a look at the areas that we were proposing to, um, expand these trail networks. And also they took a look at the existing trail networks. Um, and so they did an ecological assessment and then they also performed a wetlands delineation. The eco, eco, excuse me, the ecological assessment, uh, did determine that the, the proposed use, the, the multi-use trails, um, would not have any significant impact on the vegetative community, the wildlife habitat or protective species. So following that assessment, they did additionally, um, they performed a, a wetlands delineation. And, um, for those that don't know what that means is essentially they went out and walked the site and they looked for areas that were, um, consistently wet. They looked for specific types of vegetation, um, and then they also could look at soil, um, makeup of soil in certain areas, um, to help identify, um, areas that are wetlands or areas that are not. Um, and so they did complete that in the fall, um, and they shared that, um, a wetlands delineation map. And Lori, if we could, if we could pull that up and put that on the screen for the benefit of everyone. So, so that delineation, what that shows is, um, so it shows the Manhattan Park, uh, of, of course, the site. Um, and then these areas that I'm kind of encompassing with the mounts here that are outlined in green, um, these are areas that are delineated in wetlands. Um, and then there's also, it's a little hard to see for some of you in the, in the back, but there are some, um, blue lines that are shown. These are called linear features, um, that may be like a ditch that is regularly wet, something that might have some flowing water on a, on a regular basis. So with this delineation in mind, um, we took a, a look at the, the most current conceptual design and tried to find, uh, some trail access opportunities that matched the, the intent of the conceptual design, but also wanted to provide some opportunities for the commission to consider, um, when, um, when moving forward potentially on this project. Um, and so the next slide here will show, um, conceptual option A first, please Lori. Um, so we had, um, I worked with the West Michigan Mountain Biking Alliance, um, staff and volunteers. Um, and again, we utilized the most recent version of the conceptual designs and, and tried to match the intent of those. Um, but again, giving two options for the commission. Um, so option A, as you see before you right now, and we also have an option B. They're very similar in nature. Both of them are approximately three miles, um, in distance. Um, at, when you see, um, concept B, you'll, you'll be looking for the differences because they are very similar. Um, but the main difference here is that option A, um, does not include a wetland crossing that would be a requirement for the, the trail network. Um, and option B, as I'll show you next, um, does include a, um, a crossing. But before we move on, um, I will point out a couple of things here, a couple of the other differences. So a, as you can see, again, we're avoiding the, the wetland areas here. We're, um, definitely using the terrain on site, um, and again, to match the, the previous conceptual design. Um, one of the differences between option A and B, since there is not a wetland crossing that would help trail users get from the, essentially the left side or the west side of the sledding hill over to this side. Um, the, the intent of this design is that, uh, trail users would spill out onto the Reed's Lake Trail, the paved portion. And then, um, they would have a choice at that point. They could either get back on the trail network and, and, uh, go north on the blue trail. Or if, if they decided they didn't want to, um, hop right back on the trail or maybe they wanted to avoid some of the grade changes because there is some climb, um, as you head to the north. Um, they could traverse on the Reed's Lake Trail and then link back up to this green trail here, uh, which would provide, um, an opportunity for them to have like a loop and to stay on some of the, um, the trails that again would, maybe wouldn't have the elevation changes, um, that you would see on the west side. Um, the other thing I would like to point out here is that this line here, um, you, you can't quite see it on the, the screen here, but it's, it is identified as an access point. Uh, so currently this access point does exist, um, and, um, it, it does traverse a wetland. Um, so any improvements or maintenance to this segment of trail would require a, um, an Eagle permit. So this is option A. You'll also notice, um, that we're, um, utilizing a, a significant portion of the east side of the property, which again was part of the previous conceptual designs. Um, and then Lori, if we could, please switch over to option B. So option B, a, a, as you see, there are a significant amount of similarities between the two, but I'll, I'll point out a couple of the, um, the differences. So on option B here, um, this segment of trail would be like an access point or a connector where people could decide to enter or exit the trail network as opposed to it being, um, I, I guess a required segment of trail if, if you were riding. Um, that would, um, allow for anyone that was on the Reed's Lake Trail could hop on and get on the trail network here as opposed to having to go all the way up the sidewalk and enter into the park and come back around. So that's one of the differences between option A. Um, the other, um, difference here is that you'll notice that this green segment of trail does cross over the existing wetland. Um, and, and if you've ever walked out there or, or gone sledding, you probably are familiar with this area and you probably have walked across it. Um, and actually on our existing trail map for, um, the multi-use trails, um, there is showing a, an access point or a, a pathway that does go through here. It's just not constructed as such. It's, um, something that people, um, you know, walk it, but there's not an official trail, um, trail bed there. So the, the reason why we had, uh, suggested option A and option B, that, um, giving the two choices is that with, um, the crossing of a wetland, it, it does require a, a permit from Eagle. Um, so there is a, a formal process that, um, an application process. And Eagle, uh, for those of you that don't know, is, um, previously the DEQ, um, with, with the state of Michigan. So they're in charge of monitoring, um, you know, environmental type issues and specifically wetlands. Um, so, um, a- again, the, um, option B here would require a permit. Um, through the Eagle process, there are three tiers for permits. Um, there's a tier that is called a general permit, um, that essentially, um, you meet all the requirements, um, within their permit, um, that are outlined. Um, there's a $50 application fee and you, you go through the process. Um, and, um, you, and if you meet all those requirements, um, you can receive a permit. Um, there's the next step up from that is a, a minor project. Um, there's a $100 fee, um, and it's maybe, uh, for projects that don't quite meet the general permit category, um, but are still, um, a very low impact on the environment and would have no negative impacts on the, on the wetlands. And then there's, um, a, a higher scale, uh, a, a public notice project that the, um, the costs for permits are significantly more expensive and there's more review. Um, and we've had discussions with Bar Engineering. That's the environmental firm that we, um, used for the ecological assessment and for the wetland delineation. Um, and they've indicated that we would fall underneath either the general permit or a, a minor project category. Um, the, um, that project, um, timeline for receiving a, a permit is approximately a three-month timeline. Um, we have initiated that process. We, um, so we got in the, in the line of, uh, for review um, with the understanding that, um, the discussion here this evening, uh, being pending, um, before we move forward with a permit, um, officially or not. So with the, um, option A and B, we did prevent or present both of these options to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Um, there was a, um, overall preference for option B. There was a couple of things that were mentioned, um, one of them being that the, uh, number one, if we did not establish a formal crossing through there, that would, uh, likely, um, result in informal trails being, uh, um, you know, established and people maybe choosing their own route. Um, so by selecting a, um, a preferred access and, and crossing, um, it would likely have less of an impact on the environment as opposed to people finding their own way through there. Um, another one of the, um, reasons why option B was more desired is that they're, um, you know, not having to utilize the paved portion of the Reed's Lake Trail. Um, one of the things that, um, I've heard in subsequent days is that if we were to have a cross-country race there, runners as they select footwear, um, if they're having to run across grass and dirt and asphalt, create some shoe selection, uh, issues. Um, and, um, so, you know, avoiding using that. Um, also we heard from, um, related to having a loop, uh, per se. So for, so if somebody wanted to stay on the site and have a loop, this green access point here allows for trail users to stay on site, um, without having to, to go onto the Reed's Lake Trail. And I'm sure that you may have your own reasons, uh, for preferring one option or the other. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about option A or option B or the, the wetlands delineation or, um, anything else you might find helpful.
Mr. Melville, um, aside from the, uh, necessary Eagle permits to cross the wetlands, would there be any, um, significant difference in the quality of the trail going across wetlands or not? Or is that something that can be built up so it's still a high-quality trail?
Yes. So the, as far as the construction of the trail, it would, uh, be very similar to the other portions on the property. Um, that the area, even though it is, um, delineated as a wetland, um, i- is not something that has standing water during significant portions of the year. Um, and as noted, people are using it currently as part of the, the trail network. And they may, you know, go a little bit this direction or a little bit that direction, but it is, um, currently utilized, uh, for, mostly for, um, existing trail users. Thanks.
Mr. Melville, um, is there any concern that the wetlands could be damaged by the trail being there or people using? I understand someone, the trail's already kind of there, but for future use, if we have more people there, more bikes going across, more runners, what would be the concerns?
Yes. So the, um, the design that we'd be, what we're proposing for the, um, the trail construction project is really low impact. There's no, um, there's no paving as part of this project and there's, um, again, really low impact. Um, certainly that exact question is part of the Eagle staff review, uh, process. Um, our, our preliminary conversations we've had with, um, Bar Engineering is that, you know, since we meet that criteria, um, it would be seen as favorable by, um, Eagle, but, um, certainly a, a question for that staff. It would be part of that review process.
I, I would assume that it's possible that a well-built trail there could be better for that whole area than what we have currently, assuming that we continue to maintain those trails.
Yes. And that's, and that's where I think the, the discussion surrounding if, if it's not, um, if a crossing there is not constructed, um, if it's going to happen anyways, um, the way that the trail is going to be designed is sustainable, um, from, um, for use. Um, and if there is a segment of it that is not constructed to that standard, then, um, there would be, um, you know, wouldn't be a sustainable, uh, pathway through there.
Mr. Melville, you were talking about Eagle having several different tiers of, um, permits. And, you know, there, if it was a minor project or moderate, or I can't re- recall the terminology for all the tiers. But do both options A and B, um, do they each have the same level of Eagle permit, um, recommendation or requirements?
So for option A, um, Lori, if we could go back to that, please. Thank you. So for option A, the only, um, portion of the trail network that is shown on here that, um, does cross through a wetland, um, is this segment here. Um, so anything, um, any portions that go through the wetlands that would be improved upon, um, like if we constructed on them, we would have to have that permit. This is an existing access pathway that is utilized, um, by, by trail users. Um, and so during construction or during the, the permit process, if you will, if we, um, did not request permission to improve this or to have this, um, available to maintain, if, so essentially if this segment was taken off the map, um, there would be no need for an Eagle review of, of the project. And then going back to option B, if, if we could, Lori.
Is that that one?
Yep. You got it. Um, the, the presence of this, uh, crossing here, um, through the, um, through the delineated wetland and then also again, this, um, access pathway here. If we were to do one or both of those, we would be required to go through that permit process uh, for either the general or minor permit.
And the general's the next step up from the minor permit?
So general would be like bottom floor, like essentially.
Oh, that's the bottom floor. Okay.
Yep.
And then I have one other question too. That, um, access point that's on the far lower, um, right-hand side.
Lori?
Is that, so it looks like that's right inside the parcel. Is that correct? Is that what that?
Yes.
Parcel line, the orange line?
Correct.
Is that, what do we, what is that parcel on the other side? Is that private property?
It is. It's the, um, let's see, address?
4100?
4100 Reed's Lake.
Okay. So it's, it's private property?
Privately held, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a quick question about, you mentioned in the memo that, um, for option B, the crossing location is, was chosen because it's near the bottom of the sledding hill, but it could be seasonally closed or altered to avoid sledding trail conflicts in the winter. What does that look like?
Yes. So, uh, what I was referring to is like really this, uh, portion here as they're, so traveling from west to, to east across the, the sledding hill. And so it could look like a variety of ways. With it being at the very bottom, um, it's, it's obviously less impactful than some of the previous designs had crossings like further up the, the trail, which would be more user conflict. But again, at the bottom, if, if a slider was traveling with some, uh, good speed still down there, um, we could have, um, either, you know, like signage, um, that would show like, hey, stop and, and look, um, from the, from a trail user perspective, that they need to stop and make sure it's clear before they pass, uh, excuse me, before they pass. Um, another option that, um, that had been discussed was that to only have that open for pedestrian traffic. Um, but I, I think that there is, um, some really simple ways of having like some, um, bollard-type things to, uh, make trail users either stop or slow down, um, and consider what, um, what might be happening on the, the hill would, would be some good solutions. That would allow for both uses as opposed to, uh, shutting that segment down.
Okay. Good. Cause it does look like it, it's at the very, very bottom of that hill.
It is, yes.
Okay.
And, and that's something, if, if approved and constructed, um, we'll continue to monitor the use. And we may start out saying, we're going to do it this way and then real life kind of comes up and then. of comes up and adjust accordingly.
I have probably a basic question about how do the connector bypass trails work? You know, I'm thinking all of these trails are like one-way, right? Each day they go one-way? So are the connectors two ways and is it like, are you required to walk your bike or is it constructed differently? Just think about safety.
Sure, yeah, so it would be two ways, so people could exit the park or enter the park through that. That's where signage, again, would be helpful and I've, the WMNBA has been really helpful in showing some, there's some solutions out there that either make people get off their bike or significantly slow down during some of those areas. On a sec, we would rely on, you know, guidance from trail professionals and to make sure that we're using, utilizing it in the safest way, but I know signage would definitely be one of them and the trail design would come into that as well. But it would certainly be multidirectional.
Okay.
But we don't see the connector bypass on these maps, correct? The black line?
The, so like, for example, this.
Oh, that's a black line?
That's a connector line there, so that could be someone coming off of the Reed's Lake Trail, entering onto the trail network or vice versa, someone that reached the bottom of that hill and wants to get off, they could decide to do that there. And then again, here, Commissioner Hammack, there's this one on this side of the park.
It was hard to tell that that was a black line.
So, yeah, to follow up on Commissioner Schwartz's question, you said, so they, we're not going to switch days in terms of directions, there are always going to be two-way, is that what you were saying?
No, what I was specifically referring to is just the, just the access points.
I see, okay, just the access, okay. Any other questions for Mr. Melville?
One more question, if you wouldn't mind outlining or highlighting again, why option B was the preferred option? You stated something about the trail runners didn't like changing, they're having the different shoes to consider the pavement and the trails and things like this. What were some of those other reasons they preferred option B?
Yes, so the, one of the other options was, or reasons was that this likely would become a trail crossing and like social trails or like a rogue trail for, if you will, could be established here, which would not be built and designed to the same standards we would like to see. But then also really just having that loop on the property, like through the wooded portion, was something that I had heard loud and clear is the other option. And again, for maybe some of the, for trail users that don't want to have to climb up because there is some grade change here on this side of the park, they would be forced to come off the property and this would provide a more gradual option for that.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, so before we discuss, I will open this up to public comment. Is there anyone joining us this evening that would like to comment on this agenda item? Please state your name and address.
Brian Miller at 1033 Floral. And first of all, thank you for considering all this. I thought I was going to wait and come up at the end and summarize, but then a lot of your questions are things I think I can help answer some of the things of. So I was part of the fundraising committee for this and so I've been involved in it since I was a city commissioner. I was in the master planning process for the Parks Master Plan that we're using to address some of these things. And I was furiously typing with my phones, or thumbs of my phone to try and make sure that I got all these things. So first of all, to the topic of option B, totally support that as as the preferred option. I think that's been covered really well by Mr. Melville. I think the piece to harp on in your, or the piece to take away in your minds the most is that sled hill crossing will exist either by people just doing it on their feet. In fact, if you go there in the spring, you can see a pretty well-trenched footpath across that right now. Or we can construct it in such a way that it, everybody at least goes to the same spot. So when we do need to close it in the winter so people can sled there, it's actually feasible instead of it just being kind of a rogue trail that people use. So I think that's an important piece. I wanted to talk about the two connector trails briefly, largely just to invite you to check out some other trails that utilize that same sort of setup. So if, the two that I thought of unfortunately are further away than I was hoping to give you examples of, but if you go to the Ann Arbor area, there's a trail called DTE that's 20 miles of single-track multi-use trail. And from the parking lot to the entrance is a two-direction connector trail, much longer than, I think it's a half-mile long, but it's very similar to this in nature of you would use your bike there, you'd walk on it. And what they do to make sure that people don't get injured is they concern themselves with sightlines so you can see, it's not tight corners on those connector trails, you're able to see far enough ahead to know if someone's coming the other direction, whatever mode of transport they might be using. There's a lot of signage. And then at the entrance and the exit of that, they, I think someone, I think Derek called them bollards, but the idea is like you can put some some things there, a big rock or some fence posts so that you can't go straight through, you have to kind of do a really tight curve. The best example of that would be if you go to Calvin College, there's like the secret back entrance to Calvin College and you can't ride your bike or your car straight through it, you have to do two 90-degree turns to get into the campus. And so those types of construction, that's cyclone fencing, we probably don't want it, but that type of construction can ensure that people aren't flying through those on their skis or on their, you know, I don't know, I don't cross-country ski very quickly, but someone probably could. So other things to think about, I think regarding the wetland permitting, I mean, it's, we should be encouraged that that's the process that we would have to follow. I think the other reason that this option makes the most sense is people are going to be traipsing through our wetlands anyways, they already are. That connector trail in the southeast corner cuts right through wetlands and if you've ever been back there, that like creek bed is super eroded and there's people making bridges and piling rocks to get across it and stuff like that. I think having a review that allows us to consider whether or not that's the right way to do it and where the right place is is probably much better than just leaving it to people in the woods to figure out for themselves. So that made sense and also kind of talks to to option B. And then I think maybe just the the other thing to point out here is not something we've talked about tonight, but something I wanted to say as a resident and a participant in the master planning project, and that is just that it's really encouraging to see a community-driven effort like this. I know Mr. Burdick, I think was his last name, talked about things that we do well. So one of the things that we do well here is take our time and consider what we should do as a community and then turn to our own residents to actually get it done. So this particular project overwhelmingly funded by residents of EGR and overwhelmingly funded in terms of dollars, too. So most of the donors and most of the dollars came from people just like me who gave a little bit of money and watched to see what could happen. So it's pretty exciting and want to thank you for thinking of it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to make public comment to this agenda item? None? Okay, go on up, please state your name.
My name is Drew Kled. I'm actually from Granville, but I'm the head cross-country coach for EGR, so that's my investment in this. I get the opportunity to work with, you know, 60 kids year-round and we get to run all over the streets and you guys probably dodged us with your cars many times. And that's a really great thing, but it's also an opportunity for us to really highlight this project. When Mr. Mueller and some others were bringing this to my attention, Mr. Fisher, I thought, man, that would be amazing for our kids, not just from a training perspective, ability to, especially with option B, being able to use that closed circuit to have really specific and organized training methods for us to specify, hey, we're going to do one case, we're going to do mile repeats, we're going to have a closed area where our kids can safely run, train at a high level and compete. That'd be really exciting for them. We talked about the terrain a little bit. With option A, having to get out onto the the paved portion doesn't allow us to have actual races there. With option B, we could actually host races and invites there because like he said, we we switch into the racing spikes, so we have metal spikes in our shoes. And if you're going to run from grass and you're going to run on pavement and you're going to run back onto trail systems, it's just not, it's not good for the kids, it's not safe and it can cause injury risk. So option B is a much better choice for us because we could actually host events here, we could have conference races, we could have different invites that would actually be really exciting to bring other people into EGR and support our program and allow people to see what we do on a daily basis here in EGR and how we could support our community that way. So I was really excited about this project. I just wanted to actually show up and say, hey, I'm in love with this, I really want to support this. Our kids would use this year-round, absolutely, all summer long, we would be out there doing workouts, we'd be there all fall. Right now, we're out, literally, we're running 200 repeats on triangle leg down there because we just don't have safe places for our kids to really go out and do these high-intensity workouts. It's nice for us to use the sidewalks, which you guys were saying, thanks for plowing the roads, thanks for making sure everything else is clear, because those sidewalks are keeping our kids safe right now as we're doing, you know, I ran nine miles with a bunch of kids today and it's just nice to have pavement and not have ice everywhere. But when it comes to safe places to go work out, an enclosed area like this would be fantastic for our kids. So I just want to say that for us. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Please, just state your name and address, please.
My name is Alex Choker or Alexander Choker, if you're mad at me. I'm a student at East Grand Rapids High School at 513 Edgeman Drive. And, yeah, I spend a large amount of time on these trails and it depends, like, throughout all seasons. In the winter, we go sledding back there, not just on the hill, but on like the, on the smaller trails with like little saucer sleds. Sorry. And then, yeah, in the summer, we go back there at night, play hide-and-seek, et cetera. The, I think a large part would be on the on the wetland crossing right now, this might be purely anecdotal, but I, people cross that all the time already. I mean, it's necessary for there to be something right there because as of right now, people are crossing it without any type of restriction or, you know, guideline, guidelines. And according to the the wetland preservation eagle or whatever, this area seems important. So I think it's important that we do put something in there to protect that land because if we're being honest, people are going to cross it no matter what. That's basically it.
Thank you. Anyone else care to make a comment? Okay, then I will close public comment and I will bring it to the commission, please, for a motion and support for this agenda item.
Are we choosing A or B?
Yeah, so staff is requesting direction on option A or option B. And if the commission is comfortable with where we're at as far as input and everything, go ahead and authorize us to seek bids for this project.
I move to adopt option B as presented by Mr. Melville as the final design for the Manhattan Park multi-use trails and authorize city staff to seek pricing for the construction of option B.
Second.
Wonderful. Any further discussion, commissioners?
Sure, well, I'll just start by saying I think this was really well-presented by Mr. Melville. He captured a lot of what we discussed at the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. I personally agree with the reasoning for choosing option B. I think it's really important to have a closed loop. And I actually wasn't even aware of the fact that without the closed loop, we couldn't hold, we couldn't host cross-country meets, so that's yet another reason in my mind to choose option B. But I think a closed loop is nice just for for ease of use, for for ease of signage. And I'm really excited about this project, so I just wanted to thank the community and everybody who's put their time and effort and money into this. It's amazing what we can do here, so, thanks.
I'll echo your comments and also just add, I'm in favor of B especially because I think it's important to keep that traffic, that through traffic off of Reed's Lake Trail. The trails are already busy, we don't want intermediate riders shooting out and, you know, interrupting runners or whoever. And also I'll say that I'm one of the people who has been concerned about safety and I really appreciate the feedback through many meetings from everybody. You know, it was interesting to learn that a lot of more talented or aggressive riders probably won't come here anyway, given the short length and talking with people who use multi-use trails elsewhere, it's just not been a problem for them to walk alongside riders. So thank you to everybody here who's participated in conversation and people who have emailed and spoken with me, thank you.
Any other comments?
I just echo both those thoughts and I, too, am very excited about this for many reasons. Having the high school cross-country team, giving them the ability to have a home field, a home track, I guess, I think it's a long time coming and so I'm very excited about that.
Any other comments?
I'm glad it was pointed out that you couldn't have those cross-country meets on the pavement, I didn't know that, so.
Thank you for letting us know.
Yeah, I appreciated learning that, which right there was why I would support option B, just even just that by itself, really.
Yeah, I'm just thrilled, I'm so glad that we're finally here tonight and I feel very good about option B for all the reasons. And again, thank you for pointing that out because one of my favorite reasons was that we could do those meets, bring them back. I know that years ago, we used to have cross-country meets here at home and to give those kids the chance to do that again and host events here, I think that's so important and so exciting, frankly. So I want to thank city staff and everyone just for their diligence on this. I am very proud of the process. I know it's been lengthy, but we've taken the time, we've listened to residents, we've heard their concerns, we went back to the drawing board again, you know, looked at things a little bit closely, more closely rather, and got the answers. So I think that we've addressed the concerns we've heard. I'm, again, very proud of the process. I know it was lengthy, so thank you to everyone who put in the effort and thank you to everyone here tonight. So, yeah, I'm very excited to finally approve this and ask my full support.
So if there's no further questions, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next item on tonight's agenda, may not get applause.
There's more to come.
We're still going to be here. It's funny. Good room. Okay, the next item on tonight's agenda is consider second reading to amend chapter 53 of Title V in its entirety as required by FEMA with respect to updates to the National Flood Insurance Program and associated flood insurance rate map updates for effective maps. And that introduction will be by city manager, deputy city manager, Mr. LeFave.
Only they all knew what they were missing out on.
I know. This is just as exciting, right?
You think that, Mayor and city commissioners? Yeah, I mean flooding, wetlands, you know, okay. Well, as as was noted in the introduction at our last meeting, this is an exercise that we undertake about every five years as required by Congress. So FEMA requires a review of our flood insurance rate map that we have in the community. As is noted in the memorandum, the overhaul map that the city is still under was created in 1980 and since that time have been 26 subsequent amendments. Those are, all those materials are provided to you, those require additional engineering study to provide engineering proof that those particular properties, either how they're proposed to be changed under permit or how they exist today, do not need to carry that insurance to protect the property from being required to be in the flood insurance program. Along with the changes this time around are some state construction code, state construction code amendments, too, which are summarized in the materials. Those have been reviewed by city attorney John Huff's team and found to be in order. So at this point in time, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions, but pretty straightforward for consideration and we will send these right off to the state engineer who is noted on here, we've had some really good correspondence with. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. LeFave?
So the chuckling behind the scenes is we've gotten about six emails in the last two weeks of saying, you need to do this, you need to do this, and we keep saying, we've told you multiple times we're doing this. So that's why, the chuckle amongst the team, so.
So no questions? Okay, thank you. All right.
What they missed out on.
They're in such a hurry. Okay, could I please have a motion in a second for this agenda item?
I move the commission approves the second and final reading to amend chapter 53 of Title V in its entirety as required by FEMA with respect to updates to the National Flooding Insurance Program.
Second.
Second? Wonderful. Is there any further discussion, commissioners? No? Okay. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next on tonight's agenda is the Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals 2022 Annual Report, and this introduction will be by zoning administrator, Mr. Gianotti.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. So I'm pleased to report on the Planning Commission and in this case, our Zoning Board of Appeals activities over the past calendar year. This is a requirement as part of the state's zoning enabling act where every year we're required to present to you the activities and the actions that at the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals have taken over the past year. So I'll do my best to highlight a sort of summary of all this in this report. To start with membership, we welcome two new members to the Planning Commission this year, Christopher Rosmarin and Tom Tilma. They replaced Whitney Renner and Dr. Tom Getz. And both of those members were, you know, thanks for their service. In the case of Dr. Getz, that was over a decade of service on his part. We had eight meetings in total for the Planning Commission, which was a significant increase over the COVID years, so activities, especially in-person and business activity. So activities, especially in-person and business activities are certainly returning closer to normal before COVID. The memo kind of goes into more detail about what happened, but just to kind of hit the highlights of these. There were five different zoning amendments that were recommended for approval by the planning commission this past year. They relate to some minor tweaks to the zoning board of appeals procedures. The biggest one probably was an amendment to revise and update the standards for the MFR multifamily district residential district. A couple housekeeping amendments related to variance, related to non-conforming lots and the standards for how they apply across all non-conforming uses. There was amendment in October related to updating and clarifying the standards of review for variances that are heard by the zoning board of appeals. And last but not least, in December, an amendment that transferred the approval powers for site plans and special uses to the city commission. In addition to these amendments, there was one major site plan review that the planning commission heard. This was for the L and R Lane Development, which just as a reminder, is at the very south end of Breton Road going on the city limits between East Grand Rapids and Grand Rapids. There was one rezoning request that related to 726 Crosswell, rezoning that from R2 Residential to MFR Residential. And last but not least, this planning commission began extensive discussions on updating the city's home occupation regulations. For those that are maybe not familiar with that term, basically that defines standards for someone that wishes to operate a small, low-impact business out of their house. So we've already had, beginning last year, going to this year, three study sessions about this. Just to give a quick update, we do have a public hearing for that scheduled next, at our next meeting on the 14th to consider recommendation to the city commission. So we anticipate that potentially as soon as next month, that amendment will come to the city commission for their consideration. We also highlighted some accomplishments that we have done in our last master plan. One of them was about the mobility bike action plan. And we're pleased to report that since that was officially adopted by the city commission last year, the city has completed all short-term projects as well as several of the longer-term projects in the plan. Those include new payment markings for the shared bike lanes, new wayfinding signage, and new QR code signs that links to more information about the bike paths on the city website. We've also highlighted our efforts for redevelopment-ready certification. There have been a couple of updates to this since this memo was produced. This makes reference to a couple of major items that were still pending related to the site plan review amendment and also to codifying the city's public participation procedures. I can report that both of those have been submitted to MEDC for approval. And that really only leaves maybe a couple of minor housekeeping items that need to be resolved for the city to achieve essentials status under the RRC program. We anticipate that will happen this spring. And last but not least, we've already kind of touched on the multifamily housing amendment. That was a recommendation specifically listed in the master plan. So that was another recommendation that, procedure that we did accomplish. A couple of things that we identified that the commission can look at for the future, pretty much the same as what we've done last year, but just because they're important enough and still items that are worth considering. Looking at other updates to the zoning ordinance to help with, going in conjunction with the updates to the MFR district, actually looking at rezoning some properties to the MFR district. Just as a reminder, the master plan did propose several areas around Gaslight Village to be rezoned, basically encompassing Lovett Avenue and the north side of Lake Street between Lovett and Bagley. As I mentioned, we did have one property in that area rezoned to MFR. We could look at possibly looking at other areas on a larger scale if desired or necessary. Secondly, involves some ways to increase the amount of housing, mainly along Gaslight Village, but also in other areas in the city. A couple of areas that could be looked at include accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. Another area involves the Gaslight Investors PUD, which is previously referred to as the Jade Pig PUD. Those that were part of that initial process right before COVID, may remember that there was some talk about future phases of that development happening. Those included some level of residential development. We anticipate that potentially this year, that will come back for consideration. And we anticipate that would again include some sort of residential piece to that. So we are looking at ways or asking the planning commission to consider what sort of residential development they think would be appropriate in those areas as that comes forward. We did also want to highlight that we have reached the five-year end of the current master plan. So the city is currently looking at what we have done and noting that we fairly have accomplished the vast majority of the items or are on track to finish implementing all the recommendations in the master plan. So we do anticipate in the coming months, coming back to you in terms of whether the next steps would be in terms of either updating the current plan or creating a new master plan. There were nine total development reviews for new development or updated development in the city. Most of those were approved administratively, so they are highlighted here in the memo. Just to highlight those in quick detail, five of them involved updates to cellular infrastructure, either at the water tower or the high school tower. There were two updates to the Blodgett Hospital master plan or site plan. One of them involved some minor adjustments to access to the south parking garage and another one about some minor modifications to the south canopy and building entrance at the south side of the hospital campus. One other administrative approval that happened this year involved a property at 660 Crosswell. This is a commercial property that's currently proposed to be called the Dental House for a dental clinic. It was previously Bella Furs. Most of that project was for interior renovation. However, they are also looking to add new accessible pathways to the site that do not currently exist there. So that was the reason why that one had to go through a more formal administrative review process. Moving down to zoning variances, as you'll notice in this very short table, much shorter than in years past, there are only five variances or appeals that were heard by our new zoning board of appeals this year. And one of those five was a continuation of a request that was, that had started with the city commission. You also notice in this table that of these requests, only one of them was approved. That being a front yard encroachment variance for a covered front porch at the property at 1031 Cambridge. So in terms of number of variances and a number of approved variances, this is, I won't say this is necessarily a historic low, but certainly this is probably the fewest number in at least a decade here in the city. Whether this is due to the fact that we have a new ZBA now or whether it's because there's uncertainty about the economy at the moment, it's probably too early to say. But this is something that's be interesting to track to see if this is a trend that continues now, that we have this new ZBA now.
Yeah, definitely.
Last but not least, just to highlight a couple of other amendments that are not necessarily zoning-related, but could potentially impact development in the future in the city. Four other amendments that happened. One was related to stormwater management, basically where the city updated the regulations to align with other nearby communities. Secondly was amendment in conjunction with the MFR amendments related to signage for multifamily uses. Third was a minor modification to the swimming pool regulations, clarifying that all in-ground swimming pools are required to be in an area surrounded by a barrier, including a fence, wall, or wall of a house. And last but not least, there was another amendment to the sign regulations to clarify some standards for onopie, canopy, marquee, and projecting signs. Last but not least, we've always included a section about different local agencies that provide trainings. So these are the standard of Michigan's State University Extension, APH, Michigan Chapter of the American Planning Association, and the Michigan Townships Association. I'm happy to say that all these organizations appear to have increased their number of training classes and sessions, including many of them starting to go back to in-person training, so not all virtual anymore. So I'm happy to entertain any questions about this report from any of the commissioners at this time.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gianotti?
Do you recall what the date was for the ZBA once that actually started, that board started?
It officially went into effect January 1st of 2021. The first hearing they actually heard was in March of 2022.
So that item for 1750 Robinson, it was tabled twice and then it was denied March 23rd. Was that, did the city commission vote on that item or was that?
That was the one that started at city commission. It was heard twice and then tabled twice. And at that time, the new ZBA started, so it answered to them.
So the ZBA was, they were the body that denied that?
Correct.
Request? Okay.
It was your first one?
That was my first.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? This is very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for putting this together. Do we need to vote? Do we accept that? No, we don't. Okay.
Just report.
Okay, so the next item on tonight's agenda is consider an agreement to purchase renewable natural gas environmental attributes, RNGEA, nature-based carbon offset credits, COCs, for a total program investment per fiscal year of $21,151. And that introduction will be by deputy city manager, Mr. LeFave.
Another exciting topic our audience is missing this evening. This, this program is something that staff's been investigating as part of our ongoing efforts to reduce our carbon footprints in conjunction with the city's, city commission's goal, target date of 2040 for our operations to be carbon neutral. With that, DTE Energy has partnered with a couple of public entities on some programs, some voluntary programs that were of interest to the city staff. The first one is renewable natural gas, RNG, and also natural-based carbon offset credits. Those are with, actually with the DNR. So the RNG piece, the local and public tie to that is the City of Grand Rapids Biodegester Project. We're a wholesale customer of the Grand Rapids system, so we do send our sewage to the wastewater recovery facility, which, which has the biodegester. In turn, Grand Rapids sells, utilizes the, the gas that's produced from the biodegester to cover all of the energy needs for, gas needs for that particular plant. And then they sell additional to DTE who sells them through this program. So that's sort of the hook and tie to, to the city of East Grand Rapids and a couple of different levels. Again, the source being a public entity. The other side of it is the state of Michigan with their, with their goals for carbon neutrality are working with the Department of Natural Resources on a couple forestry project areas that are noted in some of the materials here. There's one in northern lower Michigan and also one in the upper peninsula. Again, for them to move towards those schools at a statewide level too, that we're able to participate in through this program. When you look at the blend that's recommended, we're looking at a 5% RNG and 95% for the natural carbon offsets. That's really more of, just more of a cost factor, I think, to look at that. Again, for the total investment, just over $21,000 per year to assign what our total of our usage. Our total overall usage for the city, for all energy, as I noted in the memorandum, you know, has decreased, which is, which is a positive sign. It shows a lot of the hard work from, you know, former staff and officials and, and current staff to continually look at more efficient ways of doing things to, to reduce our consumption, both on the electric and natural gas side of things. I think the number I used in there was the 18% that we were able to track and verify from a facility standpoint. Currently, our overall usage is just over 14,000 MCFs and provided a few just comparative pieces there too. So that's the equivalent of about 98 households for energy use for one year or 167 gasoline-powered vehicles driven in a year. So that just gives you a little bit of scale of what our facilities from the city's perspective, what, what that, you know, that number actually translates to, to maybe something that's, that's, that's more easy to, to visualize. And I did provide EPA calculator with some of the materials too, just to provide additional in case that's of interest for you or for any residents that may reach out to you with any of those types of questions. The, the other, the other piece to this is that both the, you know, one of the, one of the questions, one of the aspects we want to make sure we have, if this type of, these types of programs are approved in this agreement, is to make sure that we have recognized third-party verification of both programs. And for the RNG piece, AMRET is the, is the recommended vendor that does that independent verification. Then the other one that is noted for the forestry programs is the American Carbon Registry. Those are all recognized by the state of Michigan and the EPA as well. There are some other programs out there you've probably, you may have seen in some news articles or some, some cable news network shows. They've kind of focused on some of the different programs or options out there that are not necessarily vetted in terms of that, that public piece that I noted for both of these, as well as professional third-party vendors that will verify these each year. So for example, our baseline, our baseline here is based off of that 14,000 MCF usage that you see in the table in the agreement. Again, if we continue to reduce our usage through efficiency programs and new operations, way of doing things, those, those overall credits will be a bank for us. So that 10-year, the 10-year agreement may end up being more like a 12 or 13-year in total credit. So each year, we'll do a check-in with, with DTE. They'll be looking at, as we already do for efficiency purposes, we'll be looking at what our usage is here for the city and our operations and facilities. And then we'll be comparing that to the, the credits that we're purchasing. And again, those may stack up. We anticipate hopefully that those will stack up over time. So we'll be able to extend, extend that. There's a lot of materials here I provided. I provided you a slide deck from, from, from DTE that really kind of gets into the, some of, some of the different forestry programs are. So you can understand that they're not necessarily going to be all one program or the other. But when we, when we sign the agreement with them, if it's approved, they'll provide us with what the, the actual locations are of that portfolio. And then that's something that will be registered and that will be, we'll be checking in with each year, as I noted by those third-party vendors. The same thing goes for RNG with the City of Grand Rapids Biodegester project. I also just, just included a presentation that I gave, just another sustainability effort. So I included that in here that I gave to some middle school classes. I know a few of your kids were in those, in those classes this fall. Just not encompassing everything, but just to sort of share some things that, you know, we've been up to or we do that, you know, maybe aren't as obvious to people every day, but that's important for city staff. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions. I did, I did note the fiscal impact is just over 21,000 per year. So our current usage is about 100. What we pay for is about 111,000. That can fluctuate based off of some operations. So the, the effective date would actually be this next fiscal year. So we would, if the agreement is approved this evening, it would be effective for fiscal year '23, '24 that we would budget for that increase. So it would be a part of our budget, not a budget amendment. And then the, the table schedule there notes that out for 10 years. But as I noted, likely that we would be extending that. Happy to answer any additional questions that anybody has.
Any additional questions for Mr. LeFave?
We had a really good conversation about this in finance right before.
Yeah, nice.
So this was a very thorough conversation.
Yeah.
And I wanted to kind of get clarification about the, the way, the contribution, if we participate in the program, that the biggest, I mean, it's really doing it because we're trying to meet our, our climate goals. And this is a tool in the toolbox to do that, one of the tools. So.
Yeah, I think it's important to understand that this is not like, you know, we did it. It's, it's, it's done for this, this leg of the stool. You know, the programs, this program will evolve. I'm sure it may, you know, look even somewhat different a few years from now. And we'll, we'll see different things that have not been invented yet that we'll be, you know, partaking in. So this is really a step forward in that journey towards our goal. But understanding that there's certainly going to be other changes and other things that we're going to do, especially around, you know, natural gas usage. So again, step in the right direction, but, but understanding that, you know, what we see in front of us today will be different, maybe even next year, six years, 10 years from now, something that we'll be continually monitoring so that we can move towards reaching our, our goal.
And then you would also, when we talked about this, we were talking about whether the plan might change and that, you know, could be tweaked while it's in play, while this agreement, this formal agreement is in play, based on what those changes might be if they come, which they probably will.
Right. And it's likely that, you know, as you, as you, as you note in the agreement there too, that depending on what regulations change with the state of Michigan through the Michigan Public Service Commission, if parts of this are, you know, change or invalidated, so they can't count for scientific reasons, et cetera, those are. those are all things that would invalidate the terms of the agreement. So I expect there will be some changes. And again, we're anticipating if everything goes well, that we'll do an annual check-in so that we can make adjustments for the, you know, the following year's fiscal budget. But we, you know, we just know in this space that there's a lot of, a lot of change and change that's happening fast. But we didn't want to, we wanted to move forward. These programs are relatively new and especially with, with our partners, the City of Grand Rapids, with that facility, there's a limited quantity of that RNG that's being produced. And again, we wanted to try to make sure we could partner with both the state of Michigan and the City of Grand Rapids through DTE so that we have public connections, so that we can avoid some of those challenges in some other markets and other investors.
I would just say that 21,000, quite often, it looks like a big number. It is a big number. But if we equate that to the 98 homes, it's really 200, if 98 homes, it's like $214 a household. So it really kind of brings it back down to a perspective that it's a really doable number for the city.
It makes a big impact.
Absolutely.
I'm encouraged to hear the comments by Mr. LaFave and Ms. Hammack about how this is a tool and it's not, it's not the complete solution. Because my understanding of these is that they're certainly good. They're a step we could take now and it's a very positive step. But at the same time, it's not like a true renewable energy source or a true carbon-free energy source. So I support this and I'm encouraged that we're going to be doing more as well.
Thank you. This is incredibly thorough, so thank you. It's a very complex subject.
Because there's a lot there, so trying to hit the high points and.
A lot of acronyms.
Yes. So thank you so much. This was, yeah, very well thought out. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, could I please have a motion and support for this agenda item?
I move the commission approve the creation of, oh, I'm on the wrong one, sorry. I was jumping ahead to the, to the next one. If somebody else is there, feel free to take it over.
I'll move to approve the agreement with DTE to purchase renewable carbon gas environmental attributes and nature-based carbon offset credits to offset 100% of EGR's natural gas carbon emissions starting in fiscal year 2023, 24.
I'll second that. Okay, wonderful. Is there any further discussion, commissioners? Any further discussion or we're good? Okay, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on this evening's agenda is to consider approving the creation of a public safety recruit position with a starting salary of $25 per hour and benefits. And that introduction is Chief Harold.
Tag team between Director Harold and I.
Okay, the two of you. Okay. Whoever wants to start.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As memo articulates, recruitment into law enforcement has been a real challenge, like going back 10, 12 years now, is I think when we saw the kind of downturn of being able to attract and hire quality people and particularly for East Grand Rapids, being viewed as a desirable place to work. This last cycle, which again is in the memo, just we were not as, we weren't successful in identifying candidates, but it did bring a light that we are seeing, not just us considering this, but surrounding departments looking at creating these recruit positions, which in essence, we hire individuals with no law enforcement experience. We vet them, we do all the psychological, physical testing, everything before then. And then we pay to put them through the academy. We provide them a starting wage in regards to that. The idea is having, or excuse me, before in our traditional approach, our officers came to us pre-certified under MCOS, which is the state licensing board for law enforcement. And they would then go into that phase of getting firefighter training, medical first responder, things of that nature. So what we're looking at doing is expanding that so that we would put the officers through the law enforcement academies. Director?
Yeah, no, that's, this is something that we did years ago when I was in Grand Rapids and it worked very well. I think the main strength of the program, I'll say, it allows us to diversify our candidate pool. And by that, I mean more than just race and sex. You can target people that you may think be good public safety officers and good fits for our community, instead of doing like a mass hiring thing, which is okay, too. But it just gives us another opportunity, a better way to attract people. And we can still hire people the way that we did it in the past. So it gives us a two-track process. You know, a public safety officer, if somebody comes in and they're certified in law enforcement and the police recruit position for somebody that has no certification. So I, it worked well. It is fraught with some risks. An individual could go to the academy and fail. An individual could go to the academy and maybe decide to go another agency. Now, most of the time, that does not happen. They're more likely maybe to fail, but these are things that need to be considered, you know. And we did when the city manager formed the review committee to take a look at this. But overall, I think this is a really good idea. I think it'll help us get better candidates. I've already told the city manager that we have people now that are interested that I think will be very good public safety officers that wouldn't have been eligible before. So I think it's a good program and I think it's something that's needed within the public safety department.
Just to expand on that, there is grant funding out there. It's pretty easy to get, basically hire and then ask for reimbursement. Even if the grant funding wasn't there, we were not successful in securing that, it's still my recommendation that we proceed with this position in creating that. We did include a table of surrounding departments that either have a program or are considering one. For those on the personnel committee and who saw, had a question about the Kent County situation, we talked to them and got clarification and it's just easier not to put them in because.
It's weird.
It's, yeah, so we ended up just pulling that data out. So it was unique, I'll put it that way. But having said that, there is an additional, there is an additional cost. By taking this approach, we estimate to be between $60,000 and $70,000 compared to our traditional process, as the director noted. There is that risk of them not passing the law enforcement academy or not passing, you know, even the firefighter academy. We had, did have that in the past happen to us, but we really think it's the way to go. We are asking also to hire three positions. We had Sergeant Davis retired, so we're looking to fill his position and then hire two additional. That, we have a number of retirements coming at us in the next few years. And we, just because it takes so long for officers to get up to speed, fully trained, that we want to try to get ahead of the curve if possible. So we'll be advertising for certified officers as well as for this recruit position. And we'll see what we get this round of applications. So we may end up with a blend of two certified officers and one recruiter. Right, depends on what we, what we end up with for applications. As the director noted, we are, the word is out that we're looking at this and we're getting inquiries already of some potential really good candidates already. So we're excited about that opportunity.
That's encouraging.
Yep.
Are there any questions for Chief Harold, for Mr. Charles? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Could I please get a motion and a second for this agenda item?
Mark, you ready?
Yeah, I think I got it. I think I got this one. I move the city commission approves the creation of the public safety recruit position with a starting salary of $25 an hour and benefits.
Wonderful.
Second.
Any further discussion, commissioners?
I was just going to say, we had a really good discussion during personnel committee about this and I'm all in favor of making sure we get the right people. And I do think, I know we had a gentleman that came and left, but he left for really good reasons. He wanted to focus more on just firefighting. I really do think when we get those people here, they'll stay. And so this will be a good investment for the, the community.
I agree, and it's another tool to ensure that we get, you know, the best candidates and recruits that we can, so.
I agree as well.
All right, so all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving on to the next agenda item is to consider changing the date of the April 3, 2023 commission meeting as it occurs during spring break. Introduction is by Mr. Charles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Spring break does follow, fall during our April 3 city commission meeting. In the past, the commission has looked at moving it typically to the Thursday before. So we'd be, we'd have three meetings in March, so we'd be looking at.
The Monday before.
The Monday before?
Actually, we did, the last time we did the Thursday before.
Thursday, we did?
Yeah. It's, the commission's.
That's the newest.
Traditionally, it was Monday, though. You're right.
Yeah, commission's preference, but we did, so. So we're just seeking direction from city commission on if you would like to, if you would like to reschedule that meeting and move it to a different date. I would note that March 27th does conflict with the Parks and Recreation Commission. We have that meeting that same night. So we could look at a Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday or, or leave it on a third. I don't know everybody's plans at this time.
I just note that the kids in the school system have Friday off, so it's possible that people could be starting travel plans on Thursday.
Yep.
Yep.
I might suggest like a Tuesday or something.
The 28th?
Yeah, the 28th.
I'll be here that week, so.
Oh, thank God.
You can sleep.
Different week then?
I would, I would definitely prefer the Tuesday, the 28th. If there's a conflict with the 27th, that would be my vote.
That works.
We gotta leave with, just with one meeting in April, then?
Correct.
And that's okay?
Yes.
And that would be, yes.
So the chair says one meeting?
Yeah, and that would be.
April 17th.
April 17th.
Correct.
Yeah. So does the 28th seem to work for everyone?
Yeah.
Does that work for city staff?
We'll be here.
You'll be here.
What about the finance meeting?
We'll figure that out. Not important.
Nobody needs to sign off on the, on the checks, right?
Okay, so that being said, then I think we're agreeing on the 28th. Could I please get a motion and a second on this agenda item?
Motion to move our city commission meeting from April 3 to Tuesday, March 28.
Second.
Wonderful. Any further discussion? No? Okay, all those who are in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Lastly, we have the consent agenda items. May I please have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda items?
Motion to approve tonight's consent agenda items?
Second.
Wonderful. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.